Good evening, Chair. Calls the order of public hearing for Amendments 1 to the Workbook Grids Master Water and Sewer Plan Spring 2024 Update and also Amendments 1 through 3 to Resolution 00724, Master Water and Sewer Plan Spring 2024 Update. These amendments were brought forward by Councilmember Riley. He's not able to be here with us this evening, so I'm going to do my best to bring them forward and answer any questions we may have. As you know, we had an issue brought to our attention with two different properties on Jerrisville Road, Tax Map 33, Parcel 208 and 287, either being recommended for connection to public sewer systems by the Harford County Health Department, and they commented in their letters, "This is in the best interest of public health and the environment." The current sewer line is located directly across Jerrisville Road from these properties. There is a sleeve already in place under the roadway and was put in there several years ago anticipating a future connection, and the entire cost of this connection is the responsibility of the property owner seeking the connection. So during the introduction of these amendments, the amendments were voted on unanimously. At this time, council members, Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go on record again, I know we talked about this before. I support these amendments. I think it's a health issue with those two locations there on Gerald Treville Road. So I don't know how many people we have signed up to speak, but I think this is a good thing for Harford County and the safety of its citizens, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Is there counsel, anyone else? Seeing no others, Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Very good. This will conclude the public hearing for the amendments to the Master Water and Sewer Plan 2024 is now closed. Bill 24-015, Pay Classification Plan as Amended. Ms. Stevens? Congratulations on your son's graduation, by the way.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
But now he's a senior, so I'm...
He'll be fine.
So, good evening, Council President Vincenti and council members. My name is Tiffany Stevens, and I am the HR Director for Harford County Government, and tonight I am here to present to you the pay and class changes for FY25. You should all have a binder in front of you. You'll see the first page is the approval of the Personnel Advisory Board, and then if you want to flip to the next page, that is the briefing paper, and so I will read that for you guys. The county executive is proposing in the Harford County Classification Plan for fiscal year 2025 that the minimum of each grade be increased by 1%. The county executive is proposing 10 new classifications to be created and six existing classifications be deleted. In addition, five classifications receive a title change only. The creation of the 10 new classifications results in no new positions or pins, and then these new positions, or any new positions, are actually created through the budget process, not through this process. So then, you turn to the next page, this is the pay plan summary, so it gives you a quick overview of what changes are being made, and I can briefly walk you through them if you would like.
That'd be fine.
Okay, perfect. So, the first 10 are the new classifications, and I can give you kind of a brief explanation as to why we are creating them. For each of these positions, there is most likely a person in it, just changing kind of the title of what they do, but the agricultural sector coordinator, we currently have someone in this role in our Economic Development Department, but rather than calling this person an Economic Development Associate, we would like to have their title reflect exactly what they do, which is working within the agricultural community. It does not change the grade, does not change the salary. Again, it's just a new classification to be added so that it reflects what the employee does. Next, we have Claim Adjuster, that also is similar in nature. We have an employee who is now in an administrative role. We would like to put them in, again, more of a job that describes exactly what they do. This position is within the Law Department. The person currently sits in the Law Department and does claims when it comes to accidents and any kind of insurance claims. So again, pay grade is the same, just want to put them in a different classification title. Debt Collections Coordinator, again, this was in within our Law Department. There is a person doing this, again, in an admin role. Like to put this person in a position that reflects exactly what they do, and they have been doing now for several years. The Deputy Chief Budget and Management Research, we are actually not, there's no one in this position currently, this position does not exist, but we would like the opportunity to elevate someone in the Budget Office at some point in time, so that is the reason for that. First, just somewhat of a career ladder for the Budget Office. Same goes for the Human Resources Business Partner Senior. Currently, we're asking for a senior role, so we have a career ladder within the HR Department, and you will actually see down in the title changes, currently it's called a Generalist, HR Generalist. We're asking to change it to an HR Business Partner, because that's what we really are. We work within our departments as a partner. Generalist is an odd term that the previous administration made us use, and I would like us to use more of the industry standard title. Same with the Human Resources Specialist, this is adding a career ladder for my current HR Specialist. The Permits Review Coordinator, so we have someone in this role that currently sits within the Department of Inspections, License, and Permits, and they are really doing the Permits Review Coordinator. They are helping citizens as well as businesses and walking them through the permit process. So as opposed to calling them an administrative title, we would like to give them the title of a Business Review Co- Permits Review Coordinator. Risk Manager, right now we have what's called a Risk and Safety Manager, and the current person in this role is actually an administrator, so instead of calling them an administrator, we like to put them in the job that they actually do. This sits within our Law Department. Same goes for the Risk Management Specialist. Currently, they are a Safety Officer, we would like to make them a Risk Management Specialist, a title that more suits what they do, as well as a Safety Compliance Officer. So again, this doesn't increase anyone's salary, doesn't change the grade, it's just asking to put them in roles that more reflect what they do, in addition to the career ladder additions. For the deletion of six existing classifications, so we're asking to delete the Chief of Citizen Affairs and Agricultural Services. We currently do not have anyone in this classification, and we have not for several years, so just looking to kind of clean up the paying class plan. As well as Chief of Efficiency and Innovation, hasn't been used in several years. The Deputy Director of Community Services and the Director of Community Services, we're asking to delete them because we no longer have a Department of Community Services. It has been changed to Housing and Community Services, so that's why we're asking to delete those. Housing Inspector, we no longer have anyone in the Housing Inspector role. And then Risk and Safety Officer, as you see above, we kind of have changed that to the Safety Compliance Officer, or to the Risk Management Specialist, sorry. The five classification title changes, so we're looking to change the Accounts Payable Supervisor to an Accounting Supervisor. When you add the word payable, which it's been that way for many years, we don't reach the depth of accounting supervisors that we really need to reach. So we'd just like to take that payable out, and that way they can be an accounting supervisor of any of the departments within Treasury. Same with the Assistant Supervisor of Revenue Collections, changing that to an Accounting Assistant Supervisor, again, making it more general. The Deputy Director and the Director of Housing and Community Development, again, you see those, we want to take away, and then the Human Resources Generalist to the HR Business Partner.
Ms. Stevens, before you move forward...
Sure.
Is it possible for you to send me a list of those people that are in, currently in these 10 new classifications, or that are in positions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And what their current salaries are?
What was that?
And what their current salaries are?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, yes, I will do.
Thank you.
And then behind that, it just shows the bill that was submitted, and this is the salary schedule, so it shows that the minimum was adjusted by the 1%, and then followed by the legislation that you all received, the amended legislation, so this does have the dates. And then beyond that, you'll see the alphabetical classification listing, so it just puts it in a different manner, so you see all the classifications. So anything that's highlighted in yellow is a change of some sort, so you have that there. And then behind that, you will see the maintenance of our pay plan and how that...
Thanks, thank you.
For any questions.
Absolutely. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Bennett.
This is just a general question while we have you here. I know with my day job, for instance, if I finish my master's, Lord willing, I'll move to a new column, and at that column, my pay will be X, Y, and Z, and then when I get to another step, my pay... Do we have that type of pay structure for any existing positions within the county government as far as when you have this much education, this many years of service? Like, you can look on a chart and say, "I'll be paid this amount of money when I get to that point," or is it at the discretion of HR to set the pay amount for each individual employee?
Yeah, so it's at the discretion of HR, using internal equity as well as external equity in what is the dollar amount, you know, within the industry and the position. We don't have step and grade in the county government system. Now, we do have increases for those that do get a degree, so if you do get a bachelor's degree or master's degree, you can submit that for what's called a skill-based pay increase, and so, again, we look at internal equity.
Is there any sort of, like, philosophy behind whether or not you set, like, defined steps and grades versus leaving it at HR's discretion?
Yeah, so we had step and grades way, way back, way before me, and it was determined at that time during a pay and classification study through a vendor that it was best to go to what they call the bands, so a minimum, mid, and max, and so that was at, that was at their recommendation, and so at that point, that's what the county did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this, because I had some questions, and I think, once I review this later, that'll answer a lot of the questions. And I know, I appreciate the career ladder, I appreciate the succession plans, you know, I think that's what that really, really means, but in some cases, we reclassify certain positions to ensure that they, one, because they could be at the end of a certain range on scale, to reclassify them to a different range. So I know that there was a couple that you meant, that you mentioned that didn't have any increases, and I haven't had a chance to absorb this, but are any of these positions being reclassified to increase their range of salaries? Does that make sense?
So I'm not asking to create a position to get someone to the next minimum, I guess I would say of the next grade, specifically in human resources, I can speak to that. My employees are nowhere near the maximum of where they are in their current position, so moving them up one level as a senior, if they move to a senior, at some point, yes, they're going to get a bump in salary, but I'm not moving them because they're at the max.
Okay.
And as you can, if you see our maxes, they're very high, so no, that is not what...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Seeing none, is there anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, how many positions are being advertised right now and open positions?
Oh, my, I don't know at this moment.
Okay.
I can tell you we're posting about six jobs tomorrow, but I don't know how many is posted at this time. We do have a little more at this time, just because of the retirement incentive, and so as we had stated during the budget process, those positions are being posted at a lower level, for the most part, so you will see an uptick in some positions, the numbers of positions, but...
So besides those six, is there more coming that you anticipate, and what might that amount be?
It changes...
Or is it just changes?
It changes weekly, so every Wednesday, we do postings, and so it can change every week.
I do see the postings come through, but don't see the whole list, and is there something, is there some way that we can just get a list of just the basic positions in the feed, not the whole? We get a job posting, but something moving forward that we can say, "Okay, they're advertising for six jobs," you know, a water, a zoning enforcement coordinator, this and that, and what that is, just to see what's going on?
So you should get that list every Wednesday...
Every Wednesday?
As a county employee. I will make sure that you guys are included on that, but you should get that, and so that is what, it's what's going to be new posted, doesn't mean that's everything that's posted, because you've got to take the stuff from the week before, in addition to...
That's fine, just a new, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I'll make sure that you are a part of that email, yes.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right.
One more.
Yes, sir.
The Deputy Chief Budget and Management Research, I might have been distracted when we went over that, is that, I think there was an old position, and that got, is that the one that was taken away and now being brought back, or?
There was, but it was taken away a long time, a long, long, long time ago. So this is, again, very similar to what we're doing in HR, just trying to create a career ladder for someone within the Budget Office.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is that it? All right, well then, we'll go ahead and conclude this public hearing for Bill 24-015 as amended, bring it up at a future meeting.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take about a 28-minute pause. Our start time will be 7:30. Chair calls the order to legislative session day 24-018. I'd ask you to please stand, join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Boyle Sodles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we come before you, seeking your presence, guidance, and blessings for a positive and productive meeting. Bless our decisions and endeavors, aligning them with your divine will. May our actions be driven by a vision that glorifies your name and serves the well-being of others. In Jesus' name, amen.
Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none. Five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Counsel appointment, counsel attorney. Counsel, as you know, Mr. Kearney will be leaving us at the end of this month, and it has been a challenge to find someone that would be as knowledgeable as Mr. Kearney is, served the council as well as he has for several years, and I'm proud to say that through a search, we were able to find what I believe to be a stellar candidate for this We met with the Personnel Committee to review Ms. Aledgi's resume. We looked at it, saw her years of service to county government, the fact that she worked for a local law department for several years, Brown, Brown &amp; Young, starting as a summer assistant, moving up to an assistant attorney, working for the county government from 2010 to 2023. She's extremely knowledgeable in planning and zoning matters and other issues, and it is a recommendation by the Personnel Committee to move Ms. Aledgi's name forward for this opening. If approved, she will start July 1st, and if I may, I'd like to have a motion.
Counsel President, I move to approve the appointment of Megan Aledgi as the county attorney.
Second. I'm sorry?
Second.
Counsel attorney.
Mr. Pennman?
Still second.
Mr. Guthrie? Who was it?
I think it was both, but I'll take it.
Okay, Mr. Guthrie, we'll give it to him. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ms. Aledgi. Is there any discussion? Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a member of the Personnel Committee, along with Tony, we announced our appointment, starting when I was on the council before, had an opportunity to work with her and her esteemed mother, and we will, we'll leave it at that. But certainly, the resume's impressive, we checked some other ones, but other resumes, but we didn't find anything to compare to somebody with the background that she has as far with the county and all, so that's my support.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome aboard, look forward to working with you, Megan and Charlie. I appreciate your service and your friendship. Charlie assures me that he's going to be available on Tuesdays for us going forward, so, but thank you.
Long as you don't get mugged.
Not for 35 days.
Again. Mr. Janjordano, we might as well get with you, we're going to go right down the dais.
So, I knew Ms. Aledgi from previous employment and her work, so I'm glad that we've got somebody who's got years of experience and knowledge with the county that can help us in all our endeavors, that will match what Charlie has taught us and, you know, tutored us on, so I'm looking forward to that, and we hopefully welcome you aboard in the next five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Mr. Riley is not here. He also had an opportunity to review her resume and felt that she would be an excellent candidate. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. Welcome aboard, I'm very excited to work with you, and as everyone else has said, your resume is highly impressive, so I look forward to working together. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, I'll just echo what everyone else has said, and I'm also just so thankful for, from an attorney perspective, for the council to be fully staffed entering the next fiscal year with now having someone to help with drafting legislation and to have our counsel attorney as well. I think I'll miss Charlie like everyone else will, although we live in the same town, so as long as you're on vacation too much, I'm sure we'll see each other, but thank you, and I'm excited.
Thank you. And I will add that we did advertise for the position, but in just a very short time, we had a couple of applicants, strong applicants, to consider, so with that, if everyone's done, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Ms. Aledgi, where'd you go? There you are. I know, you're, I'm going to have a hard time finding you, I can see. Congratulations. Thank you. Agenda number six, special presentations, Captain James V. McMahon, Commissioner on Veterans Affairs, annual report, Mr. Brown. Good evening, sir, it's a pleasure to see you.
Good evening, our president said, I can give the, our annual report. Loud enough here as we go through?
You may want to pull that mic just a little closer.
Closer.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Sure, I'm driving this correctly here, okay. What I'm, the agenda's before you, what I'm going to do is go through the agenda, which follows the written report that hopefully you all have. I'll be brief on some areas, but I really want to delve into a couple other ones. I'll go through the mission and our membership, which hasn't changed much, our major events and programs, that's really what we're going to concentrate on, some of the things that we have done as a commission over the past year, and our outreach areas, the assistance requests that we've had, because there have been some changes there, as we go through that, our social media communications partnering, and then upcoming project and goals, and of course, at any time that you have any questions, please let me know, and I'll stop and go into more detail. First, I'll kick it off with our mission, and really, the key thing is that second word up there, an advocate. What we find is a lot of times, veterans or family members, they do not have an advocate. They come to the Veterans Commission, and they're looking for help, and sometimes we're the last, I said, last choice, last resort to go through, but then we provide them with their help, and that's really what our purpose is, in being that, being that advocate, helping them out that way. And the vision up there, we want to be, we want Harford County to be the veterans' county of choice, a place where veterans feel safe, where they can work, where they can find jobs, where they can reach out, whether they're disabled or able-bodied as well, too, within the businesses. So that's what we're looking at with our mission and vision. Just briefly, our duties and responsibilities that come from our bylaws, we disseminate information, we have different educational programs, meetings, conferences, and advise county council and the county executive, what's going on within the veteran community, because there's a lot going on out there within the county and outside of the county as well, so that's, our job is to be out in the, in the community, learning those things, and then, of course, to provide public acknowledgement and recognition of the contributions that the many veterans are making. Our county council membership, it is not, we've not changed, we're in office, so to speak, for one year, as of May 9th. I will point out here with kind of a key person on this, not everyone is key, of course, but with the, with APG, with Colonel Mundwell, and with Command Sergeant Major Denson, who both attend our meetings, they've really done some fantastic things. And just one little anecdote I'd like to put out there, is we, we had a veteran who was living alone, disabled, in a trailer in Bel Air, got notification from the Office of Aging on him, you know, "Can you go out and help him?" So we went out, provided some help, and I mean, "we," and then the APG said, "You know what? Our boss program, basic opportunity for single soldiers, how about if we adopt him? How about if we go out there and we mow his lawn? We do things out there for him, and he'll become our APG grandpa." And so they're going out there, back and forth, and doing those things, learned about it through the Veterans Commission, so those types of things are happening between our different organizations, and that's really what's important, I think, with all the different members of the Veterans Commission, to be out and doing those types of things. Our major event every year is the Veterans Resource Fair, and this year, I'm happy to say that we had the largest Veterans Resource Fair that we've ever had, over 500 people, and that's a lot of folks over the entire time there. That's, that includes veterans and their family members there as well. So why did that happen? I think a lot of it was because, again, we're out in the community, we were, we worked with the veteran service organizations, and I'll use the acronym VSO, and I have to be careful with that, because some people will see that as a veteran service officer, a claims person, versus the veteran service organization. I'll use the latter term, the veteran service organization there. In addition, we marketed directly to the VSOs, went to each one of their different locations to talk to them, to get them to come in, and for them to publicize our event as well. In addition, we had 29 different resource vendors there to provide that assistance. Of course, the VA is always the big draw to get them in, there's a line there pretty much of the day, but that was, it was really great to have them there, and to help people out with claims that maybe did not have a chance to do claims before, and also to register for healthcare. Navigating the VA healthcare system can sometimes be difficult, but there was a system there where they could come and they could register for VA healthcare right, right there. And we had a series of different nonprofit organizations there as well. APG FCU, they sponsored our raffle and our Ravens tickets giveaways. Unfortunately, the Ravens, the game with the Pittsburgh Steelers was at the end of the year, and it was very cold, and I don't know if it really mattered one way or the other, but we still had those, those tickets. We plan on doing, hopefully, the same thing again this year. In addition to, and kind of in conjunction with our Resource Fair, we have the Photo Gallery of Honor, and what that is, is we have veterans who, and family members, contact us, send us pictures, and little vignettes about their, about their veteran. And some of them have been deceased, some of them moved away, but it's really great to see those and see that rolling picture up there, and it draws people in, too, I think, to our, to our website, to be able to say, "Where is my picture up there? Where is, where is my picture there?" Our discount book, and Veterans Resource Guide, we put those online this year, we hadn't done that in the past, and our discount book is a book of those businesses, primarily small businesses, within Harford County that offer discounts to veterans, and we're hoping to grow that more this year. Our Veterans Resource Guide are the specific resources that are available. The Governor's Challenge Crisis Intercept Mapping asked a question. Just to spend a couple seconds on this one here, I mentioned this last year, the Governor's Challenge to Prevent Suicide Among Service Members, Veterans, and Their Families, really a priority, and what we did within Harford County is, about two years ago, we were named as a Crisis Intercept Mapping as a pilot for the entire state, and what that did is we brought together, it's a suicide crisis intervention system at the local level, looking at those gaps between different organizations, whether they're federal, state, and local, including the school system, including everyone else in there, and say, "Where are those gaps to take care of someone who may be in suicide crisis? How do you walk them along that line?" How do you walk them along that line? Uh, as I mentioned, I think I mentioned before, when there, uh, we were recognized for that, and in fact, um, we had, when we did different Crisis Intercept Mapping, we had different events, and this past December, we had one, and the guest speaker we brought in was, uh, a Harford County author, Will Yeskey, some of you may have heard of him, he has a bestseller. He was in Afghanistan, his unit in Afghanistan was the most decimated unit of any unit in Afghanistan, and when they came back, they had over 50% of the people either successful or tried to commit suicide. So he came in and he talked about, you know, okay, so how does that apply to Crisis Intercept Mapping? The key thing that he says, he talked about us in our group, was that it, the community is very important, the VA can't do it all, you have to have that community there, and it really kinda drove home the point, and he taught, gave some examples and some things, how his unit has come together within a community that had been spread out. So that was, uh, it was kinda good for him, you know, he kicked that off and kinda set that point for us there. Ask the Question is a new campaign, uh, you may have seen or heard or asked somebody, are you a veteran? Well, we're moving away from that, are you a veteran? But the question that we ask is, have you or a family member ever served in the military to include the National Guard or Reserve? So why do we ask that? That starts the question, because sometimes we find our people are saying, well, I'm not a veteran. Uh, at one, we were meeting with, um, up at Post 39 here, close by, with a Vietnam veteran, and he said, well, I'm not a veteran because I was never injured. I was over in Vietnam, I spent two tours, but I was never injured, so I'm not a veteran. Said, no, let's look at that, have you ever served? And then if that question is yes, or a family member, are you getting those benefits that you need? What do you, what's, what, how can we help you there? And it all kinda dovetails into this whole, the suicide awareness as well, and then we help out, we help out there. In fact, there's, the Ask the Question Program, the, uh, the Governor on, excuse me for a second here, he, this, um, published an executive order on November, in November 11th, and I was fortunate enough to be down there in the Governor's House, and it, he states that this Ask the Question will be a statewide program, a campaign provided a standardized tool to all state agencies, local governments, private sector entities, nonprofit organizations to screen constituents and customers for military service connection in order to provide opportunities for appropriate referrals and assessments for suicide risk. Harford County was the first county that took, essentially took him up on it, and had someone come out from his staff that gave us the Ask the Question as part of that December training, so we're happy to do that, and since that time, we've been asked to help other counties as they kick this Ask the Question off and ask, and the Crisis Intercept Mapping off, so we're, we're proud that we're able to do that and help other jurisdictions as well. Veteran Service Organization Listening Tours, a new initiative, uh, we, we kicked this off in the past, and not to say that we are downgrading disabled veterans or homeless veterans at any point, but what we said was, let's go out into the community and see what every, what all the veterans are doing there, instead of waiting for those calls, those complaints to come to us, let's go out into the communities. So we sat down, different members from the, the Veterans Commission, sat down with the various, there are 16 different veteran service organizations, so far we've hit 13 of them, and said, what are your issues? What are your challenges? What are you doing in the community? And it really was amazing, first thing they said was, we are the government, so you're gonna tell us what to do? Said, no, that's not it. We're here to listen to you, and a lot of them, then, their next question, their next thing that they said was, really? Said, yes, where, we don't have a presentation, what is it that you do in your communities? I know you all are out in the communities all the time, but it's really kinda rare that we have found across the state for other veterans organizations, veteran service organizations within county governments, to go out into the community, sit down with people and say, how can we help? What can we do? And importantly, what do you do? We have found just some, really, I say fan, fantastic things that the different veteran service organizations are doing, you know, helping out the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, having blood drives, doing all kinds, all kinds of things out there that, within that they can really help build a community. We call them the, really, in some cases, the pillars of the, the pillar of community, and I, I'd encourage everybody, if you go by one of these, uh, veteran service organizations, to stop in and ask, you know, what are they doing? One of the main ways that the veteran service organizations, uh, keep afloat, make their money, is by the rental of their halls, and that's a key thing, that we're trying to get more, think more publicity for them and help them out, particularly with communications. As we went out in the Listening Tours, they, what they said, the key thing is, is communications. They said, we don't have enough communications across the, across the county, what's going on with the veterans, and that drove some of the things we did with our website. Uh, the other thing was, they said VA, you know, VA healthcare, and we need more claims people. Well, we talked with the Maryland VA Secretary, Tony Woods, and what he was able to do was, now there are more claims representatives out there to help. So there's, some of these things are, they're, they're changing, they're changing based upon what we found when we, when we went out with the Listening Tours. The Memorial Day ceremonies, we were more, five this year, more than we ever done, ever done in the past. The Mar, the Central Maryland Veterans Collaboratives, where all the different counties come together, they talk about different ways that we can all help veterans across the board. And Aberdeen Military Retiree Council, really re-energized by, uh, by the, by APG, uh, to, to reach out to those retirees and also include Harford County and the Veterans Commission, and how we can work together to help out veterans there. This is a longer list here, I'm not gonna go through all these, but I would just like to point out just a couple, and that is the one, the Rees Across America, the fourth one down there, we were at the four different sites, actually more than that, we had, at Aberdeen North and South, we were at the two ones at Havitt Grace, and we were also in, in Bel Air. This year, not as many Rees as, as in the past, but it was good, at least, you know, to be out there and to show that, and particularly see the young people, to see the young people that are out there and encourage people to go out and, and do that, and pay that honor to those veterans and put those, those Rees out there. Uh, moving, again, I wanna, uh, kinda highlight the Veterans Deflection Team. What the VA has done, we, there are veterans treatment courts, I've mentioned that previously when I've been here, but what the Veterans Deflection Team is, it's a group of the veterans' justice officers within the VA and outside of the VA, different groups, that's when someone is in a compromised position with the law, they can work together. And since that time, you know, to help, help that person out, to look at the root cause, why did this happen? Can the VA help out? Can they put him in a, him or her into a, into a program? And since we've started this, there have been several here within Harford County that will be able to reach out with the Detention Center, working with them to help veterans that are there, uh, instead of saying, okay, we're gonna put you here and, and hopefully you're gonna get better, there are some very specific things that the VA will do. And the last one up there, that HCC 91.1, Veteran Sit Rep Podcast, I hope you've had a chance, someone had, had a chance to look at that, uh, or listen to that, rather, uh, that's on every Thursday at 6:30 PM out of HCC, and there's been everyone on it from the commanding general to different veterans across the board, different organizations that talk about what they can do, another way to broadcast and to talk with different, uh, out, out to the community. And they also have those, then they're, they're cataloged on the, on the site, and then people can go, go in at any time and look at it. They've had people who have called in afterwards from across the country, it's been, it's been pretty good, you've got a lot of, and it's been also recognized at the, uh, Maryland state level for what they're, what they're doing, it's unique within the, within the state of Maryland. Requests that we have had, uh, a lot of this is because of our outreach and the way that we've, we've done this now, we've had over 200 requests that I can count on, cataloged this year, and all different things. The primary one are benefits, healthcare, and employment, that we get requests for that. And these requests come in, and it's, it's more than, as you can imagine, more than, it's, it's, 'cause you get calls all the time. It's more than just a, here's the answer, it's going out and researching, finding it, and that's where we're so lucky to have so many of our different partners within the community and at the state and at the federal level. Uh, one anecdote, I could say, we had someone call me a week ago, and said that her, her husband had just gotten out of the hospital, had a, from VA, had a, an open wound, was really suffering and needed help, but couldn't get, didn't know where to go, what they could do. Said, was trying to get ahold of VA, and only, yeah, these calls normally come on the weekends, not, what could they do? Well, we were able to call the VA, and the next day, they had two people out there to take care of that veteran. I mean, not all the stories are that successful, but we get calls all the time to try to help, and people call, and we've had people call from all over the country saying they're, and unfortunately, their relative passed away here in Maryland, how can we help? What can we do? So it's really gratifying to have that, to have that happen. And again, if anyone on the dias or has those types of questions, problem, then, again, give us a, give us a call and we'll, and we'll take care of, we'll take care of that. And we're not trying to work around the 988 Press 1, which is the veteran suicide line, and we just wanna, do wanna, uh, put that, put that out there as well. Made huge revisions to our Facebook and website, uh, that was one of the things, when the county executive came in, he said, no, it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't work, uh, using other words, but it, it doesn't work. So we didn't, we went in and revised that entire, again, with the help of the, the county staff, went in, and there's some fantastic people up there, can do some magic with the, with the Facebook and the website, and now that Facebook is a place where the different veteran service organizations post their events and what's going on, they talk to us about what, what's going on. And the website, we have a website within the, within the calendar, so what we have now is when someone goes on it, they can look at the calendar and look at all the different org, or, what the organizations are doing across the entire, across the entire spectrum of, of Harford County. In addition to that, our resources are there. Kind of a neat thing, I think, that we've done, um, and the webmaster was able to do this, and her idea, is to come up with these pictures of each different veteran service organization, you click on that, it'll go to their website, or you can go to their Facebook page, again, to find out what, what's going on within, within the county. And then resources, we have our different resources there, all in one, all in one place, so any veteran can go, or family member can go and look at that, so it's all in, in one place for them. We partner with a lot of different organizations, I mentioned them before, and again, I'll, thanks is probably not enough for the Maryland, Maryland VA, we send so many referrals there to help with claims. Uh, it is, there is one person that does that, he is a one-person shop for Harford County, Cecil County, and part of Baltimore County, and so you can imagine, he gets a lot of claims, but he's very good, uh, he's known throughout the state, so we send people there, and we also have the Disabled American Veterans that help out with that. Now, as I mentioned, Secretary Woods has, has another person to help, help him out here, so that'll hopefully lessen the load, lessen the load there. Maryland Commitment to Veterans, I know a lot of times we say that the, uh, that the state gives us things to do, but, uh, those that give us any money, what they're doing here is they're giving us, actually giving us money for our flyers, for our bags, and things like that, that we hand out, so which is, which is really good. Upcoming events, uh, just a couple to highlight here, the Claims Clinic on June 12th, that's where the VA is coming in, and they'll talk about claims across the board, now people can come in, and it's by registration only, we did this two years, every two years, they bring in the actual claims officers, the one who rate the claims, and this is truly unique throughout the state that they're able to do this. And November 9th is our Veterans Resource Fair this year, hopefully, we'll see you out there at that. The other ones I've, I've gone over, uh, and support the different programs that we are, that we're doing. So in the end, uh, kinda to summarize here, what we're trying to, and what we want the veterans to know is that they have earned benefits. I, I hear so often the phrase of, you know, I, I don't wanna do anything with the VA, I don't wanna do this because I'm taking my benefits away from somebody else, but the way the veteran, the VA is funded, is they're funded by the number of people who actually use the system. So by going in and using the VA, you, how much you use it may not be that much, but then you're helping somebody else, you're helping somebody else in there, so we put that out and try to get away, and they're earned, they're earned benefits, uh, they're deserved benefits for, for our veterans. That concludes my presentation, I'm open to any questions.
Uh, well, first, um, let me thank you for your service to our country, our service to our community, our service to the, your service to the veterans. Um, I've witnessed and seen firsthand, uh, the value that you bring to our community when a veteran's family is faced with a end-of-life situation, and you step in to help them navigate to where they need to be. Um, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Brown, I just wanna compliment ya, uh, I thank you for your passion, your hard work, you are an incredible asset, uh, to this county, um, and I appreciate the county executive bringing you on board and giving you the resources needed, uh, to be successful, because you have been successful through the Resource Fair and all the other outreach that you, that you've done, and will continue to do, so, uh, I just wanna thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you. Mr. Guthrie?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I echo the same sentiments, uh, uh, and I'm, I'm glad to see that it's named after someone I served on the council with, you know, Captain Jim McMahon, we had a great time on the council together over the years. Uh, I always remember my father-in-law died, who was a, um, uh, World War II heavily decorated veteran from World War II, he came to the funeral, uh, fully with his uniform on, and gave a eulogy to, uh, my father-in-law, so I, I, I'd never forgotten that, but one thing that, I guess, I could, uh, not here in Harford County, because he lived in Baltimore County, but, um, we didn't know for probably eight or nine years after he passed away, that my mother-in-law was entitled to a benefit, a paid benefit. And I guess I, I don't understand why she wasn't notified of that possibility, you know, just what happened was, a friend of mine who's a veteran, he says, is your mother-in-law collecting the, the, what she's entitled, I said, what's she entitled to? Well, she's entitled to a benefit, you know, for the rest of her life, and the benefit was like 13, 14 hundred dollars a month for the rest of her life, 'cause the only thing else she had was social security, you know, she's living with us now. Uh, we checked into it, uh, and, uh, yeah, she was entitled to, and she was getting it ever since, and the other problem was, she couldn't make it retroactive either, so she lost nine years at, uh, 12, 13 hundred a month for nine years, because nobody mentioned it, and didn't know it, you know, and if, if a friend of mine, you know, had, uh, brought it to my attention, we would've never known it, so, um, uh, but he, he spent, uh, the last two years of his life at the Veterans Hospital, you know, on Lock Raven, and I'll tell you, it was, they, they treated him great, and he was there full-time for the last two years of his life, 'cause he still, he still had, um, uh, wounds from the, from the war and stuff in his body that they couldn't take out, and it finally got to him and it took him, but, uh, he was a great man, but, you know, and I thank veterans, oh, the hospital, what they did for him for the last couple of years of his life, thank you.
Yes, sir, and that, you bring up a very good point, that end-of-life, and I've talked with somebody, in fact, today about that, about that a lot of people don't know, it's that communication, and that's the one thing that we are trying to do through the Resource Fair, through getting out of the community, through working with the veteran service organizations, and talking to people, is that, particularly the, you know, the acronym, the, the DIC, or whatever, uh, whatever it may happen to be, that they're entitled to at the end, that a lot of people don't know about it, and then it is, like you say, it's not retroactive, and they don't know, don't know who to talk to, and that's where, you know, we encourage everybody to contact us, and we'll sit down, we'll go, I mean, I've been sitting down with people all over the county, just to do those types of things.
Yeah, I think they need to take a look at that, uh, there's no effort to notify the, the spouse, you know, when, when the veteran dies, you know, uh, and I think that needs, uh, somebody needs to pay attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
I just thank you all for all you've done, um, I especially enjoy the podcast that's produced at HCC with, uh, you know, Bill Montgomery's involvement in that, um, I think it's a real, I just saw on CBS Sunday Morning News at the World War II Museum in Louisiana, uh, where they sat down and did interviews with veterans, since so many World War II veterans, you know, are being lost to time, to get their full stories, and now using, um, technology, you can go and ask any question you want, and the veteran responds back to you based on the recordings. Um, and I just think these interviews that we're doing locally is a form of local, you know, historical preservation, these stories that are shared, uh, on the podcast, um, I think it's good for our local community to know the stories of the people who live here, who serve here, um, and it's just a really special thing. So on top of everything else that you all are connected with, I just wanted to celebrate that, and if you haven't listened to it before, it is available online, you don't have to listen on the radio, but it's also on the radio as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Janjordano?
Hi, Bob, thanks for coming, uh, explaining everything, I, uh, enjoy going to the Memorial Day Celebration at Bel Air, um, I think the biggest kick I get is listening to them to play the battle hymns, uh, not the battle hymns, but the, uh, hymns of all the services, and trying to pick out which one is which, so the Bel Air Community Band does that, and it's, it's so well-attended, um, so many veterans come, and they're so proud when, when they call and they get up and everything, so it, uh, and I know they're trying to make that bigger, um, they had some, um, display stuff down there of, you know, some, just some of the rifles from, the rifle from the, uh, Spanish Civil War, all the way up to, um, I guess, what's the last one? one? You know, probably Afghanistan, or, yeah, but a couple old Jeeps and everything. So it was, you know, a very proud moment to be there with all the veterans and listen to all that, so.
Thank you. It was a great, a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you. Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes, legislative date twenty-four dash zero seventeen, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, they stand approved. Agenda number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions, we have none. Nine, introduction of bills, we have none. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have before us amendments one through four to bill twenty-four dash zero eleven. Sediment control, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve amendments one, two, four to bill twenty-four dash zero one-one.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. President, can we take the amendments one at a time, please? Yes, we can. Can you redo your motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve amendment number one to bill twenty-four dash zero one-one.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moved in second to approve amendment number one to bill twenty-four dash zero one-one. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett.
I was hoping maybe Councilman Guthrie could speak to his desire to have them vote on one at a time. Just in preparation for tonight, I was under the impression you supported the four amendments, and just wanted to maybe hear your thoughts, because, you know, I'm supportive, in support of your support, if I could say the word "support" as many times as possible in one sentence. But if that's changed for you, I think that's important for all of us as a council to know before we vote.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I was going to discuss, I only have a problem with amendment three. I don't have a problem with the other three amendments. And I don't know where it got out that I had already approved all four of these amendments, because I hadn't. I just have some problem with some language in amendment three. And I'll, when we get to amendment three, I'll, I'll give you my concerns.
Mr. Guthrie, could we then have a motion to move one, two, and four as a group?
Yes.
May I have that motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve amendments one, two, and four to bill twenty-four dash zero one-one.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved in second. Again, is there any discussion to one, two, and four? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janzer Danant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, amendments one, two, and four to bill twenty-four dash zero one-one are hereby approved. Now may I have a motion on amendment number three?
Council President, I move to approve amendment number three to bill twenty-four dash zero one-one.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moved in second to approve amendment number three. Is there any discussion? Mr. Guthrie.
Yes. My problem goes back to, you know, I guess, my college days when I graduated from Antioch University, I had a, I took a class on language, because I negotiated lots of collective bargaining agreements and lots of contracts, and I'm really stickler for words. And this is one, in the last sentence, right at the end of the word, where it mentions about, in part, to provide for work on more than one grading unit under certain conditions, excuse me, under certain circumstances. I wanted to put a period after "unit" and delete the, those three words, and Mr. Pennman since it says amendment, didn't agree with me, so. But my problem is that, that, what certain circumstances? And what you're doing with this kind of language is you're allowing two sides to argue who don't know even they're going to be arguing with each other. You could say this actually applies to the main body of amendment one, and that could be, but when you have language like this, and they always teach you that it is not good to have any language that you can argue about or fight about it at a later date, but that language there, I hope it doesn't come and bite us in the butts down the road somewhere, but when you say "under certain circumstances," what are they? You couldn't possibly list them of all the circumstances that there could be. And that's the problem. That's why I wanted to put a period after "unit." I probably won't vote against this bill, but I'll probably abstain, because I'm really concerned about that language. It's going to, it's going to come by us somewhere down the road, and there'll be a lawsuit somewhere, and we'll be in the courts, and we're going to give her a job to do, you know, to argue on behalf of us or for behalf of the county. So that's my concern, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a conversation, Councilman Guthrie and I, and the certain circumstances, I think, is described in the First Amendment. And I might add as well, that this is the title page description, it's not actually in the code. So I felt it was better served with it there. The certain circumstance refers to amendment number one, which was just voted on in the past, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett.
I just wanted to reiterate what Councilman Pennman just stated about being on the title page of the bill itself and not in the code. I think that's an important clarification for public understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Janzer Danant?
Might as well weigh in myself, because I asked Charlie the same question this morning, and he gave me the same answer, because that was my concern too, is just what certain circumstances was, and it was in the title page. So I was glad to talk to Charlie to get that straightened out, and probably the last official piece of business I might have Charlie do. And then, Megan, I'm going to be asking you that question, and, yeah, well, that's good. That's good to know. Thank you.
We hope nobody else asks the question, let's put it that way.
Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Abstain.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janzer Danant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, one abstention, and one absent, the amendments to bill, or excuse me, the amendments one through four to bill twenty-four dash zero zero one are hereby approved. And Mr. Kearney, correct me if I'm wrong, now that one through four has passed, we don't need five?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Janzer Danant, please read amendments twenty-eight and twenty-nine to bill twenty-four dash zero fourteen, our annual budget appropriation ordinance, into the record, please.
Amendments twenty-eight, twenty-nine, bill twenty-four dash zero fourteen, annual budget appropriation ordinance, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. Amendment number twenty-eight on page nine and line seven, strike one million two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-nine, and substitute one million two hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-nine. In parentheses, to reduce office of drug control in the amount of, in parentheses, forty-five thousand. Amendment number twenty-nine on page eleven and line eight, strike two million four hundred ninety thousand two hundred ninety-six, and substitute two million five hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred ninety-six. In parentheses, to increase circuit court in the amount of forty-five thousand for drug testing required by the adult drug court grant now managed by the judicial branch.
Thank you, Mr. Janzer Danant. And due to a time constraint, we are going to move these amendments this evening. May I have a motion, please, for voting block number three?
Council President, I move to approve amendments twenty-eight and twenty-nine to bill twenty-four dash fourteen.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved in second to approve amendments twenty-eight and twenty-nine to the bill twenty-four zero fourteen. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett.
Is this changing what that forty-five thousand dollars would have been spent on, or is it just changing where that money is put under?
Ms. Spence, if you could come forward, please.
Good evening. The forty-five thousand dollars is for drug testing for the folks for adult drug court, so all it's doing is moving it to judicial as part of the grant. So it's not changing.
It was always meant for that, it's just...
It was always meant for that, it's just being moved to judicial, because that's where they have the grant now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janzer Danant?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, amendments twenty-eight and twenty-nine to bill twenty-four fourteen are hereby approved. Mr. Janzer Danant, please read amendments thirty and thirty-one to bill twenty-four dash zero fourteen.
Amendments thirty and thirty-one, bill twenty-four dash fourteen, annual budget appropriation ordinance, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. Amendment number thirty on page seven and line nine, strike fifty-one million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and seventy, and substitute fifty-eight million four hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and seventy. In parentheses, to increase fund balance appropriated to provide additional funds in the amount of six million five hundred thousand to Board of Educational Instructional salaries. Amendment number thirty-one on page twelve and line four, strike one million, I'm sorry, one million nine hun, one hundred ninety-six million seven hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred ninety-two, and substitute two hundred and three, two hundred three million two hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred ninety-two. In parentheses, to increase Board of Education instructional salaries in the amount of six million five hundred thousand.
Thank you. Again, we will be moving these because of time constraints. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve amendments thirty and thirty-one to bill twenty-four dash fourteen.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's moved in second to approve amendments thirty and thirty-one. Is there any discussion? Mr. Janzer Danant?
So I just want to thank Council President, Bob, I know we, the county executive, we worked long and hard trying to make sure that we got some money for the teachers, trying to spread some money around. I think it was appropriate that we had some extra money that was coming in that we thought might be out there. So I'm glad that some of the reports we had showed that we did have some, some money coming in. Hopefully, it continues to come in, and I'm grateful for the, for the six point five million that we were able to get for the Board of Education at this point.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
If it's appropriate to ask either Ms. Spence or Mr. Sandless, I know I emailed you prior to the meeting, if you could just explain what changed this week? And my other question would be, what does that say to our financial health moving into the next fiscal year, what you saw in the most recent dispersment?
So this week, we received the May distribution for income tax, which represents the first quarter, which would be January, February, yes, January, February, and March. You may recall, kind of before that, we were talking about that we were about thirteen million dollars at the end of February from where we were at the same time last year. And some of that was because we had a reconciling distribution that was significantly lower, about ten million dollars that we were expecting. But what we weren't expecting was that the two quarterly distributions, in this case, the fourth, which we received in February, and the third that we received in November, were negative, were down. And most troubling is that they were withholding. So, you know, this isn't the estimated payments, it comes from capital gains, and is always a little bit volatile, but the withholding, which is normally a little more solid, were both showing negative. So there's a lot of, there's just a lot of concerns about what was going on with the labor market and the like. So we received this May distribution. It was, we did see a bounce back in, in that withholding, and our overall May distribution, instead of being negative as the two other quarterly distributions were, was up five point two percent. So all told, you know, we're still down from where we were at this time last year, but instead of being down about thirteen million, we're down, we're down about, you know, seven or eight million, so it's about a five million dollar swing, five and a half million dollar swing, and that's why we thought that we could have enough fund balance that we could extend some additional appropriation to, to the school system. Now, what does it say about going forward? It's kind of hard to say. There wasn't much given from, from the state as to, you know, maybe what was all driving this, and we could just tell some of the raw numbers, but we still don't know, like, was there, were there issues with the, the Comptroller's new, new tax accounting software that was causing some of this? Was there some things that maybe were missed? Or is this just kind of indicative of, you know, maybe the economy's having a little bit of a bounce back? Now, at the same time, just came out about two or three days ago, that the first quarter at the national level, the GDP was revised downward to one point three percent. So there's still just a lot of conflicting information out there as to, as to what our economy is doing and where we're going forward. And I think that's why we've been, you know, extremely cautious in trying to forecast those revenues, and we're still not changing the revenue forecast for next year. But again, you know, we can say that, you know, we have about, you know, five, six million dollars more from income tax than we, than we had a few months ago, relatively speaking, and that's why we were comfortable to make this, to make this adjustment.
To follow up on that, when the dispersment came out, I'm assuming you've probably been in contact with other counties across the state? Is it similar across the board, county to county?
Yeah, because normally the way the dispersments go is, again, all of the money comes in to the state, and then they disperse it to everybody, kind of based upon, you know, what percentage of the pie, when they had the last full year of taxes they had. So, you know, Harford might have been, you know, four point two, Montgomery might have been, you know, twenty-five percent, so everybody did see an increase. Some saw a little bit larger increase, just because relatively speaking, their share of the pie was higher the year before. But again, if we have, if we were under-distributed from that, you know, we would see some extra money come in, in the future. So the overall distribution was up statewide, six point two percent, so we were five point two. So again, maybe a little bit of, of hope there that, oh, when they redo it again next time, that, you know, maybe we'll be a little bit under, and we'll get a little bit more of the reconciling. So, but yeah, a lot of the other counties, you know, we continue to, you know, we continue to kind of struggle with this. I can, I can say that actually tomorrow, I'll be, I'll be doing the Mako Conduit Street podcast, and talking about a lot of these, a lot of these issues with some other county, county, county finance people. But again, I think we're all, we're all struggling with, you know, just where all of this, this income tax is going, because we've never seen it, this, this type of, this type of volatility that we've been seeing the past couple of years.
Would, and would you just say in plain language that after, after this week, are you feeling more optimistic about the next fiscal year than you were a week ago?
Maybe I would say slightly, slightly so, but I, there's still a lot. We still have a quarter of the income tax to go, and this is what's always been so challenging. Here we are, you know, we just got the, you know, the, the third, the third of our four distributions, but we still have one whole, whole one to go, most of which is actually received after the fiscal year closes, but then we kind of accrue it backwards. So, yeah, maybe, maybe slightly, slightly so, but, but again, you know, then I saw that information about the first quarter being revised downward national. It's, I don't think that we're going to see, this is probably the main thing, is that, is that I don't think we're going to be seeing any dramatic increases in income tax, and that's probably going to be true of all of our revenues kind of going forward. We had a few years where we had some really strong revenue growth, you know, that, that income tax went up by twenty percent in fiscal year twenty-one, certainly not the year anybody expected that to happen, because we were in the throes of COVID. Going forward, you know, that's one of the things spending affordability was, was doing to say, and okay, we're probably going to get back to that more long-term average of three and a half percent with, with income tax. And that's, that's the challenge, because the budgets, the pressure to grow budgets seems like it's growing faster than, than the economy can, can throw off. And that's not just an issue here, you know, statewide, you know, as I said, kind of during the budget sessions, the, the state revenue is growing at a, at a far lower pace than what, than what we're doing. And of course, you know, they're dealing with all of those, those challenges as well. And just this, this past week, you know, Moody's, you know, put the state on a, on a negative watch, still maintain their AAA, but put them on a negative watch just because of some of the concerns about fund balance and revenue growth and current win and all of those things, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I first just want to thank the council for unifying voice in advocating for public education and teachers. And I know myself, Council President Vincenti, and my citizen budget advisor, Brooke Scherzer, worked tirelessly to identify several areas in the budget where we could use or reallocate funds, and I think that came to a head today, and that decision was made, and I appreciate the efforts by the, the county executive to move the needle, not where we, we were requesting, the needle, not where we, we were requesting, but it did move the needle. And I did look at the dispersment of about, yeah, 5.2%, and I'm hopeful that at least the June dispersment will come in at 5% or 6% too, and then we'll be, we'll be hopefully a little better off. But I would say, though, there, we're not done with this yet, you know what I mean? We still have time. We're up against the clock, you know. It's coming really, really quickly, but there are other deficiencies in the budget that, you know, myself and other members of the council would like to see addressed. So, I, I hope the conversation is an open dialogue between the executive branch and the legislative branch, so we can fix these other inconsistencies. But on the surface, I appreciate the executive branch, you know, moving the needle some, so we can take care of our teachers. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Mr. Sandless, good evening. Thank you for your, your knowledge and explaining everything. Income tax, this late in the year, what is that income tax actually made up of?
So, this, this distribution was, would represent the first quarter, which would be all of, all of the withholdings from all of our paychecks and all of the estimated payments that people made for January, February, March, you know, that, those first three months of this calendar year.
Okay. Do you know the percentage of withholding versus income tax usually when we get this distribution?
I mean, most of it is withholding. Withholding is, withholding is far away, you know, the largest component. It's, it's probably, you know, 80-some percent of the total, of the total distribution, you know, maybe even more so than that. And then you have estimated payments. Estimated payments can mean everything from, say, capital gains to, oh, you have a small business and, or maybe a large business, and you are, you know, you're making estimated payments or for whatever reason. And that number's always been volatile, you know, because, again, things happen, big stock sale, whatever. But the withholding is generally a little bit more consistent. And that's been, again, the real, the real concern was, was when we saw that withholding go down for two consecutive quarters, you know, across the state. It looks like it bounced back, but again, you know, were those two anomalies or was this an anomaly?
So, when we had budget hearing and I found out information from payroll companies that our payroll was up 25% in Maryland, but 27% in Hartford County, that's part of this, because you just said payroll's the largest portion of this.
Yeah, so payroll, payroll is, and then to the extent, you know, so what we saw is that, I think overall, the withholding in this distribution was up, was up about seven, was up about 7%. So, you know, again, whether or not that's, that's ongoing or not, that's, that's only going to be, be the challenge, is, you know, is how much of that is ongoing. And again, was any of this, and we're hoping to get some answers, you know, was any of this because of the, of the new system? Were things delayed somehow? Was it a calendar issue? Withholding can always be tough, too, just like this past month. In May, we got, if you work for the county government, there were three, three pays in the month of May. That happens twice a year. When that happens to really big employers, it can, it can shift the, the number, too. So, we don't, there's a lot that we don't know, but, you know, again, if we are seeing overall wage growth, then that's certainly a, certainly a plus.
So, so I, and I agree, but, and I'm going to stick to my guns in saying that the 25% that I said it was obviously is coming through. Part of it's got to be from the increased wages, you know, the minimum wage went up to $15, you know, effective January 1st. So, by the end of June, that we're going to get, we're going to get withholding, probably not much, some estimated payments, I would imagine, too. So, so it's going to be interesting to see, but, you know, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but I don't think anybody appreciated where I was coming from with the information that I got, that it was, that was pretty accurate, and it's, and it showed up in the last two things that were clawing back from the, obviously, from the big deficit that we had, the 13 million. That's all. And I just wish, I just wish that I would get some recognition from, from you guys in saying that, hey, you were probably correct with the 25% that we're getting for, for revenue coming in that was increased, you know, it was solid knowledge, it was fact-based knowledge, and that's it. That's the only thing I have to say other than that, so. A little frustrating sometimes.
Yeah, but then, as, but as I always say, there's a couple of things, and this is the challenge with, with the income taxes, that we're doing this from a, from a statewide, from a statewide, from a statewide basis. And again, there's a lot of volatility within that estimated payments that can, that can drive this up and down. And that just goes back to that, we're trying to come up with, you know, conservative, conservative, long-term trend numbers, but, you know, hopefully, that is the case. You know, we certainly didn't see it go up by, by 25%, you know, up by, up by 5%. And if we go up by, you know, in, in, so the June distribution, kind of where we actually get, the, the second quarter is split up into three components. You get, we get two-thirds, I don't know, about two-thirds of it in June, in June 30th, the other remaining third in July, and then there's a reconciling, which can be, depending on how far off they were on their estimates, either significant or very minor in August. So, you know, again, we'll, we'll wait and see, to see how that goes, but, you know, I, I'm hoping you're right, you know, so, but it all goes back to.
Don't tell him that.
I, you know, you know, like, none of us are rooting for, for revenues to be down, but as I always say, what we, what we don't want to do is to be overly optimistic and create ongoing spending based upon ongoing revenue that's not there, and then having to come back to this council mid-year and ask for cuts, knowing that we really can't cut about 80% or so of the budget, that we're then trying to find cuts in 20% of the budget that we kind of have that direct control over, so.
Well, thanks, thanks again. Appreciate it, and look forward to getting those numbers at the end of June.
Mr. Pennman?
Just want a quick follow-up. Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I appreciate the incredibly difficult position you are in to forecast this, but, you know, it wasn't so long ago that, that, you know, the projections were 5%. They were, you know, the increase in budgets was 5% across the board. Then we had one dispersment in January. Now, we have one dispersment in June. So, I just hope that we're not budgeting month-to-month for a $1.2 billion budget and going forward, and that we have a complete picture, if you know.
No, and, and, and again, when we, when we came in, you know, we were looking at, at where, at what the state was kind of projecting for, for, for income tax, and then we were, we were largely kind of following suit. We knew that that big January distribution was going to be down, because that was a reconciliation from '21. It was a huge capital gains year. There was a lot of stuff going on. We also know that there was a lot of changes with how the state was doing, these pass-through entity credits, and that everything the state was saying was like, hey, that's, that $20 million, where you would normally only get a, you know, get $5 million, but you got $20 million, you know, that's not sustainable. But we really did, though, think, and this was how the spending affordability had it, was that the November distribution, the February distribution, the May distribution, that's where we were expecting, you know, 4% or 5%. So, this one was in line with kind of what that was. But when we saw those two distributions, and you saw the withholding going down, and, and you're, you know, you're, you're hearing things, you know, at the state level about how the labor force has not rebounded, and how we're losing, you know, losing workers, and workers are retiring early, or, you know, we're seeing that all around here, you know, retiring early, and, you know, or, you know, moving to other states or what have you. You know, that was not typical. And so, I don't want to, you know, you certainly don't want to go and find, you know, one year being a trend, but there was several of those years that, that did that. And again, we still got a lot of time, you know, we, you know, we, none of us know at this point what that, what that June, July, August distribution is going to be. But I think, just by being honest, we were like, okay, this was our, our income tax, you know, concern. It did come in higher. We did feel that we could make the change on the, on the fund balance side, not so much the ongoing revenue side, in order to, you know, kind of, you know, give some of that money back while maintaining those fund balances at the level that we believe they should be in accordance with how the rating agencies have, have, have advised that they be.
One quick follow-up question. I know we have one more quarter. It looks like we're at $254 million in income tax, and with the budget of 311, you know, if, if the June payment comes in at 5% or 6%, you know, we're going to be really close to that. And then you have the July and the August, August being the reconciliation. And with this being, you know, whether it's an actual or a timing issue, and the possibility of the new system for the state influencing that timing, have you had any conversations with the Treasury Office for the State, the Comptroller's Office for the State, on what maybe that, that reconciliation in August may or may not look like?
So, really, so the reconciliation in, well, there's a couple of reconciliations, but the reconciliation we normally receive in August is because what they're trying to do is that they know most people are closing, are, are, are closing their books. And you like, think about how we just got the May distribution. The May distribution was for, you know, almost two full months, almost two full months ago, but because they understand that counties are kind of up against, and the state are up against that June 30th number, they estimate the, the numbers that we receive in June and in August. Like, if it was, if they didn't have the, the end of year, you know, we probably wouldn't get that money till about August. So, they kind of estimate it, and then if they're off on that estimate, that's where we see the reconciliation. Now, the, now the reconciliations that we receive as far as for the full tax year, those are now largely coming in November and January. There was a time where they were coming September. There actually was times where there were some forms of them in the August distribution. We haven't received those in many years. And now, most of the reconciliation from the prior tax year is, is, is between November and January. So, yeah, we're just not going to know, you know, a whole lot. You know, I, I'm hoping that we can, you know, I, I still think that we're probably going to end up probably a little bit, a little bit under the budget, but, but this helps, you know, in getting us, getting us closer to it. I certainly don't think we're going to be exceeding the budget, though.
Thank you. I'll make a side bet.
So, you know, there's been a tremendous amount of work to get to where we're at so far, and we still have some work to do, for sure. But I just want to give a shout-out to my colleagues here on the council for their diligence and willing to look at every issue, every item, every budget line, to ensure that we were doing our best, in this case, to serve our, our children. Our children represent our future as far as the schools go. We've had many conversations with Mr. Castley, our county executive, obviously. I've sat with him many, many times over the last few weeks, and with Mr. Jan Giordano, Mr. Pennman, Mr. Schertz, Mr. Andish, Ms. Harris, not to mention the work that Mr. Kearney and Mary Kate has done preparing amendments that, as of this afternoon, we didn't need. But I just want to recognize you for the work that you've done, the service that you provided us, and then also, Robbie, your team at the Treasury, and Kim, your team at Budget Office, answering the questions that we had. And then I want to recognize and thank the county executive for recognizing the importance that he did of our children and moving this forward. But as Mr. Pennman said, you know, we're hoping that there's some other things looked at, some other issues that need to be addressed, and if we can, fantastic. So, I believe, I believe I've covered everyone, pretty much. Ms. Harris, for the phone calls, for the meeting set up, for the letters. I appreciate that. And with that, anyone else have anything to say?
Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Amendments 30 and 31 to Bill 24-014 are hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Amendment 1 to Bill 24-023.
Amendment 1, Bill 24-023, zoning wall signs introduced by Council President Vincenti. Amendment number one on page two and line nine after displays, insert, "Only one electronic message board shall be permitted on a premises, whether it be a freestanding sign or a wall sign."
Thank you. Also, Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Amendments 1 through 11 to Bill 24-024, livability code.
Amendments 1 dash 11, Bill 24-024, livability code, introduced by Council President Vincenti. Amendment number one on the title page, strike beginning with "and," and in the first line of the title paragraph down through section 162-15, and the second line of the title paragraph, and substitute, "enact to repeal and reenact with amendments the definition of code official," and Amendments, code official, Department of Section,
And Department.
And Department of Section 162-2, definitions and word usage to repeal and reenact with amendments subsection A, B, and E of section 162-4, enforcement waivers to repeal and reenact with amendments subsections A, C, D, E, F, and I of section 162-5, powers and duties of code officials to repeal, to repeal and reenact with amendments subsection E of section 162-6, condemnation, unsafe structures and equipment, vacation to repeal and reenact with amendments, section 162-8, violations and penalties to repeal and reenact with amendments, section 162-9, appeals to repeal, to repeal and reenact with amendments, subsection E of section 162-14, fire safety requirements to repeal, to repeal and reenact with amendments, subsection A and F of section 162-15, responsibilities of owners and tenants all. Amendment number two on page two, strike beginning with sections in line 20 down through sections 162-15, in line 21, and substitute the definitions of code official and Department of section 162-2, definitions and word usage that subsections A, B, and E of section, of section 162-4, enforcement waivers that subsections A, C, D, E, F, and I of section 162-5, powers and duties of code officials, that subsection E of section 162-6, condemnation, unsafe structures and equipment, vacation, that section 162-8, violations and penalties, that section 162-9, appeals, that subsection E of subsection, one of section 162-14, fire safety requirements, and that subsections A and F of section 162-15, responsibilities of owners and tenants all. Amendment number three on page three, strike in their entirety lines 1, 3, 5, 10, and 14. Amendment number four on page four, strike in its entirety line 18. Amendment number five on page five, strike in their entirety lines 1 and 5. Amendment number six on page six, strike in their entirety lines 11, 20, and 22. Amendment number seven on page seven, strike in its entirety line 10. Amendment number eight on page 11, strike in their entirety lines 14 and 16. Amendment number nine on page 12, strike in their entirety lines 11, 18, and 23. Amendment number 10 on page 12, after line 22, insert the following. "Section 2, and be it further enacted, that two years after the effective date of this act, the department shall submit to the county council a report that outlines the effectiveness of the livability code and provides recommendations for improvements to the livability code." Amendment number 11 on page 13 and line one, strike section 2 and section 3.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. 11, call for final reading of Bills. Bill 24-011, settlement control as amended, may I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve Bill 24-011.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie.
As amended.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Bill 24-011 as amended. Is there any discussion? Mr. Guthrie?
Just, my bill, it's been a long time getting to this point on this issue. Hopefully, just bring some clarity back and some, some, give a very insane sanity that we have going on right now with, with some of the constructions going on around the county, with, around 152, with the settlement control problem we've had there for the last three years, water runoff, muddy waters in the gunpowder, all the way from the bridge, all the way up into, into Chappa Town, and also the Bush River, and there was people complaining, well, why should this affect, would this cause of this one contractor? It's not true. It ain't the one contractor. You got, you got 300 acres up in Abington Woods that they started clearing, and they cleared 70 acres off of Abington Woods, and that's 300 acres. Can you imagine if they would have cleared that whole entire 300 acres, which they legally could have done with this bill? They cleared 70 acres and found out, and we're still investigating how all that happened, at least I am, because if this bill would have been in place, and of course, this was always in the law for over 100 years, at least, as far as, go far back as we can go, there was a requirement of the 20-acre requirement. In other words, if you had 100 acres developed, you can only develop 20 acres at a time. When that's done, you can do the next 20, next 20, next 20. That, that gave you control over the sediment. next twenty, next twenty. That, that gave you control over the sediment, you know, that's going to run off. Well, they took it out in two thousand seventeen, prior administration, not this administration, and it allowed a contractor to come in and clear his entire property and then build all his houses. Well, now it's been over three years since they've done that. They weren't even half done building the amount of houses, yet all that property's clear, and it's given us, still giving us, as of today, runoff. And Abington Woods, the same thing, where they cleared seventy acres, and if the bill had been in place, at least the mistake would have only been twenty acres instead of seventy acres. It would have taken four times to get up to seventy acres with this bill in place. So we're hoping to bring back stability in an entire state of Maryland, over twenty counties, all in the entire state of Maryland, all have the twenty acre requirement. None of them have anything over twenty acres. So let's put some insanity back to, or lack of insanity back into this project, and hopefully that we can end, and not have another problem like we're having originally reserve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Jan Giordano.
So I just want to, myself and Dion, we met with Steve Walsh regarding the bonding, and we did some research to find out that currently the county is right in the middle between Baltimore County and Carroll County on what we charge for the bond. So we did look at that as well, and we thought it was prudent to leave it where it was. Just wanted to give everybody an update that we did look into that, in case anybody, that was one of the things we had mentioned that we were going to do. And we did do that, and it looks like right where we're at, believe it or not, is right in the middle of, of the bonding amount. So that, that worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
Just to finish up, also wanted to let everybody know, if they hadn't read the whole bill, that we raised all the fines to another number. They used to have the first violation in a twelve month period, they, the fine was two hundred and fifty dollars. We changed that to five hundred dollars, and it happens in a two month period instead of a twelve month period. Second violation was also within twelve months before. We changed that twelve months to four months. So if it's second violation in four months, the violation used to be five hundred dollars, we've raised it to a thousand. For the third violation, within twelve months, we changed it twelve months to six months. For the violation was a thousand dollar fine, we made it five thousand dollars. In addition, we had the, the amount of the fine, all the fines were before could not exceed ten thousand dollars per incident. We raised that to twenty thousand. So that's part of this bill also.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Seeing no one else, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano.
Aye.
Mrs. Bill Sodles.
Abstained.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
So we have five votes in the affirmative, one abstention and one absent. Bill twenty-four dash zero one one, settlement control as amended is hereby approved. Number twelve in enrollment of bills. Bill twenty-four dash zero eleven as amended is certified as being the text finally passed. Thirteen, unfinished business, we have none. Fourteen, new business, we have none. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do you have any to sign up?
We do, Mr. President. We have five this evening.
Call your first speaker, and I will remind you, you have three minutes.
Monica McHale, followed by Michael Blum.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Hi, Monica McHale, two one zero three, Wyndham Court, Bel Air, Maryland, two one zero one five. I just wanted to say thank you for our police over this past Sunday at the Hartford Mall. I was in the PetSmart across the street getting treats for my cat, and I saw a couple of police officers pull up, I think about six, three on our side and three on the mall side. And I asked the register lady to, to ask what was going on, and we were told that we couldn't leave the store. And I got a little upset. I said, oh, my mom's in the car. I'm leaving the store. You're going to have to take me out, you know? But they said you couldn't come back in. But the response that I saw from just being across the road was very quick, and I was thankful. I'm thankful I wasn't in the mall. But I'm really proud of our police department and the response that they had in a timely manner, being that the mall is like, you know, one of the highly, more densely populated areas in the county, I feel, at times. So I just wanted to say thank you to our police officers, and I appreciate the quick, really quick response.
Thank you, Ms. McHale, for that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Blum. I run the parade in Bel Air every Fourth of July, and also every Christmas. I also am in charge of the committee that chooses Ms. Bel Air. And it is my great pleasure to introduce to you tonight the reigning twenty twenty-four Ms. Bel Air, John O'Romero, a graduate of St. Margaret's School and John Carroll School, a resident of Joppa Town, and also with grandparents here in Bel Air. We'll stick to the three minutes, and I turn it over to Ms. Bel Air.
Mr. Blum, before you walk away, I need your address.
I'm so sorry. Mike Blum, eight hundred, Sidemill Lane, Bel Air, Maryland, two one zero one four.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Hi, thank you so much for having me here. So as Ms. Bel Air, I am very lucky and fortunate to be able to represent this amazing community at both Miss Maryland at the end of June, and here locally in the community as well. I think what makes this so incredibly special is just being able to outreach and go into the community and create that sense of community with everyone. I know here at Bel Air, there are so many amazing events, and I am very lucky and proud to represent the Fourth of July in the Bel Air Independence Day Committee. To just speak a little bit about that here tonight, I really wanted to highlight some things that are going on on Fourth of July. So we begin at six forty-five, raising the flag, which is really special, that we're able to honor our beautiful and amazing country here, right in Bel Air. And then we move on to the Bel Air High School for a pancake breakfast. There's chocolate chip, regular pancakes. I think there's blueberry. It is a really amazing experience, and I mean, who doesn't love pancakes? So that's always, that's always great. And then there's also fun little activities in Shamrock Park. So it's all safe, family, fun, which is truly great to experience and create that sense of community, as I mentioned earlier. And then moving on to my two favorite parts is the parade that happens in, on Main Street, and you can even see some taunt twirlers, which is truly special to me, since I am a taunt twirler. So that was always my favorite part of the parade, is seeing people twirl for their high school or twirl here locally. It truly is a beautiful experience to see that. And then, of course, ending the day with fireworks is so special, and it is really beautiful to look up in the sky and see all different colors and hear all the noise and all the music that's playing in the background. So I truly believe if you have never been to the Independence Day celebrations, this is the year to check it out. You need to go and see it. I've been going there since I was little, since my grandparents live here in Bel Air, right by Bel Air High School. So it's been a huge tradition of my family, and I would really love for it to be a tradition for everyone sitting here. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sal Sabatino, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sal Sabatino, I live at eighteen sixteen Barrington Village Court in Bel Air. Reason for my wanting to speak tonight, I'm trying to follow this stuff that was on the internet about what's going to happen at the mall, tearing the mall down, erecting a five story multi-use building. Am I correct on that?
Mr. Kearney, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's an issue with the town of Bel Air that you would have to address.
Yes. Oh, that's, so, then I stand corrected. That was basically, I wanted to get some information on that because I didn't know they could go up five stories. I thought three was the limit. Can somebody correct me?
Mr. Sabatino, I would suggest you give maybe Eddie Hopkins a call tomorrow at the town of Bel Air.
Okay.
And I'm sure he will be able to give you all the information that you're looking for.
I can do that. And, and the best part of this whole night was the young lady that just left.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh two, Eagle View Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. Regarding comments from the Budget Advisory Committee presentation, I wonder, is reducing the size of warehouses and restricting commercial traffic from residential streets anti-business? Is reducing the size of grading units and requiring property owners to observe development codes anti-growth? Is it okay to incentivize questionable behavior or ignore the law for growth? I have my own issues with County Executive Castley. Still, Hartford County voters elected him and rejected his predecessors' practices, policies, procedures, and processes. Draw your own conclusions. Perhaps Mr. Tibbs, addressing the cost for emergency services, offered the most insightful comments on the economic situation. Hundred million dollars, two hundred million, does not matter. There is no cheap labor fix. Business growth won't cover that estimate. Hartford County needs to be an industry hub with multiple mutually supporting businesses that pay taxes for that. Looking now at tax revenue projections and the requirement for the tax base. First, the tax base. The three largest employers and property owners, Aberdeen Proving Grounds, the combined agencies of the Hartford County Government, and Upper Chesapeake Medical Center pay no taxes, none. Tax revenue starts with a negative balance. Looking next, at previous development efforts to boost tax revenues, we see Evmar Continuing Care Retirement Community Fail Project, no growth. James Run, Zoned and Mole, never materialized, now just houses. That site was an ideal location for industrial zoning with buffers and direct access to I ninety-five, lost opportunity. BRAC, APG got the mission to expand. Anybody know any production companies that fell in on top? And a curiosity, recalling the tire paralysis facility promoted by the previous administration. Great in theory, not technically feasible. Anybody remember the Baltimore Land Guard system? Maybe a little independent research on that topic. You all tell me about your visits to local school events and social engagements. Please tell me, which one of you held a call with the CEO of any large national or regional company seeking a new location? How many of them do you know? Anybody know what the current defense budget looks like? Arizona Economic Base with the seven Cs, copper, cotton, cattle, citrus, climate, canyons, and cactus. Tell me, please, what is Hartford County's economic base? There's a recent baseball film clip, center fielder fields the ball, baserunner heads for home plate, nobody covering home. The center fielder did not hesitate, and without being told, ran down the baserunner, tagged him out, preventing a run. That is a baseball legacy. Please do not wait for the county executive to present you with a plan. Use some initiative, formulate realistic solutions to growth. Be a legacy. Good night.
Thanks, sir.
Brianna Coleman.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Brianna Coleman, twenty-three forty-seven, Inglewood Road in Foster. Good evening, council members. It's nice to see you again. I am looking forward to the APFO meeting here tomorrow night at six P. M., and urge anyone listening at home to attend and be part of the conversation. Every parent and citizen concerned with overcrowded schools and development continuing in those areas should be showing up if they want to see change. Currently in Hartford County, we have eight elementary schools that are at ninety-nine to one hundred and fifteen percent over capacity. Full is full. Councilman Guthrie and Councilman Pennman have consistently attended past meetings, as well as Mr. Vincente, and I'd love to see more council members there to listen and learn. It's been nine months since I first stood here and spoke about our overcrowded schools, and began advocating to lower our percentage from one hundred and ten to one hundred percent. Since then, the town of Bel Air has removed abutting school districts from their ordinance, and this week in Baltimore County, their council voted to reduce their APFO threshold from one hundred and fifteen percent to one hundred percent. Lastly, I'd like to express my disappointment from my district B representative in regards to his vote last week. It's frustrating to see him vote no to updating our permit fees on something that hasn't been updated in decades, and as with any best practice, should be in line with inflation. I'd be interested in hearing his solutions to our outdated fees because more of the same is not the answer. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. With no more speakers, we'll move to Agenda Item sixteen, business from council members. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Wednesday, I attended a Joppa Town High School graduation at the Hartford Community College, the APG FCU Arena. It's always, it's always entertaining for me to attend these graduations because it's really good to see the young people when they graduate, how happy they are, when they get their diploma. A lot of them dance on the stage and do all kinds of different things. So it's really, it's enjoyable time to see that. Friday, I had Councilman Jim Riley and Tony G meet me over at Flying Point Marina, wanted to show them a couple of things, and want to show them a gem in, in Hartford County. And they were both surprised, and Tony can speak for himself when he comes in. Jim's not here, but I'll, so I'll speak for Jim. He was, I don't know if any of you here have been to the Flying Point Marina in Edgewood. They have a restaurant there that, that'll just, you'll enjoy very much. What he's done there, he's put a little bridge across, there's a little aisle in there, and he put a little bridge across. He's got the whole thing sanded. He's got tables and umbrellas, and, and they have music on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They have big crowds there on them times. The food is excellent. Eat outside. It's beautiful. They got a long pier they put out there also, where boats tie up, and people get off and eat. I'm sure both Jim and Tony were surprised, and they didn't know what this little gem we have in Edgewood. So I asked you to put that on your bucket list because you'll be very surprised. Also, it's going to be grand opening of a restaurant and bar at five twenty-five Pulaski Highway. We seem to be opening some places, and all it looks like with, with Copper Mine, and all these people who are visiting our counties from Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every weekend. We're, we're opening more restaurants in the area and other stuff. Because of the amount of people that are coming in, the numbers are raking somewhere around ten thousand people on a given weekend. And they already, the, the eight fields they put in, they already don't have enough fields. And, and they're spinning off into some other directions where, where they need fields. So it's, it's going great. We need more restaurants. We need more hotels, too. I said that about nine months ago, but nobody believed me. But finding out from, from the owner that the first weekend they opened, they were five hundred rooms short in the area, and that was with three thousand people in attendance. So they're now pushing nine, ten thousand a weekend. I don't know where all the people are staying, but fortunately, we're losing the business. They're going to Baltimore County and even to Baltimore City. Also, the boutique opened in Edgewood also, at, at, there's a four little rest, four little businesses right there alongside the Edgewood Library, and this boutique opens right on the end. And also in that little shopping center, they have a deli mark, which has been there for thirty-two years. They have a smoking area also, and they also have an Italian restaurant. Tony will be happy about that. Right in that center. So things are popping all around the area. Last night, we had the Edgewood, Joppa, Joppa Town Community Advisory Board meeting down at the Southern Precinct. Councilman Pennman was there, and we had, we had a full house. We had the county executive was our guest speaker, and he brought everybody up to date on the Southern Task Force and, and the meetings that were planning. And he, he had the questions, and it was a really good response, back and forth, very good question and answer period went on for a while. Also, I want to congratulate Major General Robert Emerson, who is retiring from the APG. He's been thirty-three years in the, in, in the Army. He's, I wanted, and I wrote him a letter shortly, and a couple excerpts out of it, said I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to Major General Robert Emerson on the occasion of his retirement, after his distinguished thirty-three years of dedicated service to our nation. I thank Major General Emerson for his thirty-three years. I thank Major General Emerson for his thirty-three years of service, his commitment and sacrifices have helped to secure our freedoms and protect our way of life. On behalf of a grateful nation, please accept our deepest gratitude and best wishes for fulfilling and rewarding retirement. With, uh, and respect and gratitude, congratulations. I know a lot of us council members have been with him at different events, uh, on APG over the last couple of years, and, uh, he'll be surely missed, but congratulations to him. Uh, one thing that's going on in our county, uh, our young people, that they've got this thing going, it's called the Aubreeze Challenge. And what that is, is these kids get, and they're not kids, all of them are seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years old. And unfortunately, I think one of them might wind up getting himself killed over this. I'm not kidding. What they're doing, what they did just here recently at, uh, uh, in Edgewood, uh, at, at, uh, one of the stores there, that they, they come in, and they have these guns, and they're full of water beads, and they shoot them off at different people, uh, uh, causing a lot of problems. Well, you know, and they look exactly like guns. Uh, and, uh, I, I did some little research on that and, and found out that, uh, Central Florida is, is having a big, uh, problem with it, so it's called ARBEZ Challenge. And, uh, these beads can cause serious injury when fired from an air-powered gun. The Facebook, uh, post reads, in many instances, these air guns are painted and resemble real functioning firearms. Well, I know, I'm sure you've seen enough news around the country, you know, a kid winds up, or a young man winds up, and, and he has a, uh, a, a toy gun that looks like a real gun. We've had a number of them that got shot and killed because the policeman thought they had a real gun. So, watch that stuff going up, they, they wear all black clothes, and, uh, there was like, uh, a dozen of them, uh, there in Edgewood, uh, over the weekend, and, uh, causing all kind of havoc. So, uh, watch for them, uh, and their kids, or you know any kids who are like this, better talk to them, because we're gonna have a real serious problem that, uh, they're gonna confront a, a deputy somewhere, and the deputy's not gonna realize that that ain't a real gun, and we may have a serious problem. For that, Mr. Ferris, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to congratulate, uh, the girls' lacrosse team for Foston. I acknowledge the boys' team, uh, for some reason I, I wasn't aware of, and I want to apologize for that, but congratulations to the girls' lacrosse team, uh, for Foston on their championship, and I think we're gonna honor them, uh, coming up. Um, I also had the privilege, uh, to attend, uh, the highway dedication of a section of, uh, Route one sixty-five, in the honor, the, the life and service and legacy of Thurman Ellis, uh, for his heroic actions in World War Two, along with over fifty years of service to the Jarrettsville Fire Hall. So, um, and then I did attend, uh, several graduations, so I wanted to celebrate and congratulate all those, um, high school graduates and wish them well in the future. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Mr. Janjordano?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Bel Air Downtown Alliance is gonna host, uh, first Friday, this coming Friday, June seventh, from five to eight, be live, local music, beer and wine, food vendors and more, located one-twenty-one South Main Street. The Bel Air Market, uh, is open on Sunday, June ninth, from nine A.M. to two P.M. The Parisian-style Open Air Market features antique and artisan vendors and is located next to, uh, the Lot at Dust Beer Hall. Uh, Summer Concert Series in Shamrock Park on Sunday, every week from seven to eight fifteen, and I got to also, uh, attend my alma mater's graduation. Bel Air High School was last Thursday, um, and they, uh, they have a nice tradition where they have the, uh, there's rose arches where all the graduates come through and leave for that. And then, um, we also did Patriot Assembly at Ring Factory Road, um, last Friday, and I do like to thank the, uh, the mayor for keeping me abreast of, uh, that there was an incident at the Harford Mall, and I'd like to, uh, thank Bel Air Police and the Harford County Sheriff's Office for working together and, uh, and keeping us safe, and, and I know they're still looking for that person. So, um, I think finally, um, in a couple of weeks, on, uh, the twenty-third of June, the Bel Air Town Derby is gonna be back. If you didn't get a chance to see it, uh, last year, uh, get out to see it. It's, it was like the first time in like forty years or something, they had the, um, the Derby cars, yeah, go down Main Street. So, look forward to that again, and, um, that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Miss Sodals?
Thank you. Um, Harford County Public Library's Summer Reading Adventure started this past Saturday, June first, and it will run through August seventeenth. You can go to their website to sign up. Also, I'm excited to announce that my first monthly newsletter for District E has been released today. Um, to subscribe, please email my aide Tara Lathrop at T.Lathrop@harfordcountycouncil.com. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bennett?
Hello, good evening. Um, Havering Grace is having first Friday as well this Friday. I guess it's the first Friday everywhere. That's how calendars work. Um, but feel, feel free to come, it's always fun. I, my wife and I always look forward to walking around. Uh, like many of you, I attended many graduations, and I just want to wish all of our graduates across the county a successful and happy future, um, hopefully rooted right here in Harford County. Don't leave to live somewhere else. Um, we need young people here. Um, this past weekend, I attended the Waden Festival at the Anita Light Estuary Center in Abingdon. It's a, a great event, yearly event, um, that's, uh, a celebration of our, uh, natural environment, but also a reminder of how quickly it can slip away as we measure, how far can you see your feet as you walk into the waters, uh, as they go deeper and deeper. Um, it's a really, uh, a fun, a fun event. Uh, I highly encourage everybody to check out the Estuary Center and to remember how precious our local water is here in Harford County. I attended the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Austin Gray this past weekend. Uh, like myself, he finished his eagle at the very last second, got his, uh, Court of Honor post-high school graduation. I, I joked with him that I finished with two days to spare, because I, two days before my eighteenth birthday, I finished my eagle project. Uh, but congratulations to him and to Troop nine-six-five for all their success, helping raise our, our young men here in Harford County. Um, I wanted to make sure to highlight, uh, the fire that took place at the Steppingstone Farm Museum this past weekend. Horrible, horrible, um, situation. Uh, there were no injuries and no animals were involved, um, but there was total loss of the barn and many historic, uh, artifacts that were there. Um, you know, thank you to our volunteers, uh, from Level and from Susquehanna, who helped take care of the flames. Um, but, uh, you know, Steppingstone could use a lot of support right now. They're also asking people not to drive down or walk down their way as all this is getting cleaned up. Um, but you can go to their website, um, and, uh, donate to support them in this time, um, to help with whatever comes next, to support them. Uh, just a horrific fire, and, um, it's a good reminder of why it's important to support our volunteer fire companies and the work that they do. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, I too want to congratulate our first responders, um, not only for their action at Steppingstone, but also here in Bel Air. Um, I don't know where we'd be without them, so, um, like my colleagues, I attended, uh, many graduations, um, just about every one of them, I think I attended, other than Aberdeen, because it was last Tuesday night during our council meeting, and, and Patriot Programs. Tomorrow morning, we'll be doing Jarrettsville, uh, Patriot Program. Uh, and I too want to congratulate all of our graduates and all of our young patriots, um, moving forward. Uh, this past week, I had the opportunity and the honor to, uh, sit, uh, as a presenter for the Harford Leadership Academy alongside the county executive. Uh, I want to thank Angela Rose, John Matee, and Vicky Horn for helping facilitate that program. We would encourage all current and emerging leaders, uh, to consider, uh, completing this one-of-a-kind experience. I mean, it's great. Uh, you get all kinds of information through this program, and this, this particular presentation was to talk about how our local government works, so it was very interesting. And then also, uh, I see Ms. Sullivan has left here this evening, it's her birthday, I wanted to wish her a happy birthday. Um, and then I want to close with my deepest condolences, uh, and Jeannie's as well, to express our deepest condolences to the Stork family, um, on the passing of Mr. Stork. Kathy, all of their family are near and dear to us. So, we ask that you keep, uh, his daughter and all of our, our, their family, and our friends, uh, in their, our thoughts and prayers, or their thoughts and prayers, uh, during this difficult time. Um, I've known them, had the pleasure of knowing their family for the past eleven, twelve years, I guess, and, uh, just amazing, so he will absolutely be missed. Uh, and with that, we'll go ahead and conclude this meeting. Thank you.